Then they sent me upstairs. Then they took me over to the park in citizens. Well, that was all right. They got to pick up the fact that I gave them my job.
That's rather normal.
Well, everybody wears their pajamas. So I, I, um.
Deputies hold them out.
I got over that. Well, first thing they did was throw me in COVID. I wasn't safe. And they never tested me for it. So I didn't understand how they did that. Plus, you're supposed to only be in COVID. Where they take care of you for 14 days. And I was there the 16th day of retinue with my lawyer. Either get me out of here or I'd get my lawyer. So I had three casts instead of them. Hey, I heard yesterday something interesting.
Behave for us, the sheriff.
We better off.
And you're right. He started on me as soon as I got in here.
Hi, it's Nikki from the Controller's office.
Good morning. I heard that yesterday.
Good morning, Eileen.
Good morning.
It's Mr. Smith, and I think Jason York is on the phone, too.
Hi, thank you. That's where there's two that I know of. He told me that all of that family that bought that complex of yours, they're all small boys. Well, he said, he said it was my minister's son. But at any rate, he said. And he's been around. Well, he's apparently not doing much about it, but still. It is crazy. Well, if there's anything serious, I will. I'll be calling the cops. Like, what are you gonna do, nothing?
What? Nothing.
Nothing? What?
I'm an operator. We make stuff happen.
He's sorry, it's his fault.
Oh, don't start that rumor. I get blamed for too much now.
You're talking about your coffee. You got your pen and your set.
What's that? It's like the guy that's the guy that I turn all those students, all those college students in for parking anyway, which way they lose. They park anywhere they want.
Good morning. We ask you to please rise for the firm pledge of allegiance. Dear only Father, we thank you for this day. We're about to enter a new month and a season of the year. We grieve this morning for the loss of our 13 service members killed in Afghanistan. We know they died protecting others. They are heroes who memories will never be forgotten. Comfort their families and friends at this difficult time. Provide them with peace and comfort only you can provide. We pray for those that are wounded. Heal them, Lord, and bring them home to their families. We pray for the protection of all our military and the ones that are fleeing. Protect each life from trouble. In that, they will take refuge in you, Lord. Father, you tell us in your word. He shall call upon me, and I will answer him. I will be with him in trouble. I will deliver him and honor him. Lord, today we also celebrate retirement of one of our dedicated employees. He has served the public with great dedication. Bless him and his family as he enters the next season of life. We ask you to be with all our employees as they serve our constituents daily. Guide and bless them. Lord, we ask you for your guidance on our meeting this morning. Help us to have good discussions that result in productive decisions. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time. And we'll ask for approval of amendments for the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items only at this time?
No.
Hearing that, we'll move on.
Today, we're presenting Richard Whalen with his retirement clock. He's from Department of Public Safety. Beth is going to safety work.
Bring that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we're here to talk about Richard Whalen, telecommunicator one, Lycoming County, 911 Communications. Rick started in communications on August 17th, 1999. His retirement date is going to be September 3rd, 2021. 22 years, 17 days of service to the citizens of Lycoming and Sullivan Counties. He is one of our most dedicated telecommunications. Always willing to help, especially with staffing. When we were short staffed, Rick is always more than happy to help out. He is going to leave a huge hole in our staffing. Already have staffing problems, and Rick is always the one that always, you know, steps in there. Just to give you some numbers to show you his dedication. In 2018, Rick worked 646 extra hours. 2019, 569. 2020, 554. And so far in 2021, as of his retirement date, I looked into today in the week, just in nine months, 517, or eight months, 517 additional hours that he's worked this year. So Sherry, I'm not sure what you're gonna do with him. It's always said that you spend more time at work than you do at home with your family. Rick really did spend more time at work than he did at home with his family. And so he's gonna be here. Well, now, Sherry, I'm sorry. So I'm really not sure how you're gonna handle all those hours. And among all that, he still had time to serve the citizens of Woodward Township and surrounding areas as their fire chief. And was a, does a wonderful job with that as well. So I'm not sure how he fit all that in. I know from many years of working with Rick, he's one of those people that sleep like four hours a day and is perfectly good with that. It's more than obvious that if he gets four hours a day, he's doing pretty good with all these numbers that I'm looking at. He's always been a very solid telecommunicator. His loss in the center is going to be felt. His knowledge of geography in both Lycoming and Sullivan Counties is second to none. I can tell you when I was new and knew nothing about Sullivan County, I loved having Rick there because he knew everything. For those that didn't know, he worked for Coke and Pepsi as a delivery person for many, many years before he was a 911 telecommunicator. So he knew where everything was. So he was a huge asset to this day in the center when it comes to geography and helping people and knowing where things are. He's been a great mentor to the new telecommunications. Always friendly, always nice, always willing to help anybody who needed help in the center. Whether it be, you know, a senior person or a brand new person, Rick was always there to help anybody. For years, I was always very well behaved with Rick because I kind of saw him as a father figure. And then as I got older, we seemed to get closer in age. And we weren't always quite so behaved. But what I always knew, he was like a father figure to me. So we spent a lot of time, many years on shift together, evening and midnight shift. Had a lot of fun. We solved a lot of world's problems. And we had some pretty deep conversations and a lot of laughter. And Rick, we're really gonna miss you in the comm center. I can't thank you enough. I'm very grateful for everything that you've done for all of us. And the couple of years that I've been at the top of the food chain over there, I couldn't ask for a better employee. So thank you. You're gonna be missed, and please enjoy your retirement.
Sheriff wants to talk.
I think the sheriff wants to come up, too. Rick, come on up. Rick, you might wanna sit down.
He reminded me of today, so that's why I'm here. What do you think of that?
Don't tell me you took notes on that.
It's crazy. I can't even, I had to turn off, but now I don't have to insert.
The ones that don't know the sheriff, they're one of the whole footfalls.
I don't know where to start. Rick's been, he's our neighboring station at Woodward Township with Chuck and I at Lycoming. We fought fire after fire after fire after fire. This guy, I don't think he ever sleeps. He's on every call. He's been at 911 22 years. And joint two is when?
93.
So do the math. Whether it's a crash, and we have, you know, we can have horrible incidents. That route 220 has been about horrible crashes. He's there. Drownings, crashes, babies being born, fires, assaults. Yet he would go to work in the worst of times. And he would leave, he would leave an incident. Very seldom miss work. He can miss work if he chooses to by law. Get back to work, be on the board. You think he's still up to fire, and you hear him on the board. You don't replace this, this level of emergency provider hardly ever today, which is what, which is what scares the hell out of me because we keep losing quality people due no fault other than the fact their tenure and their, and their season, and it's time for them to move on. I worked at the center for about, I guess about seven years back in the, back in the 80s. You can't work there today and know what you're doing until you have a great amount of support from Beth and Hutch and the T1s, I mean, the T2s, because it's just not a job you can go new. And I'll tell you, Commissioner, if you think you can, go sit on the board. I would ask Hutch to put you on the board and see how you do. It is incredible what they have to do. This guy never, never a sour note on the, on the board. I don't ever call, you know, I kind of spar with people at times. Never once. I don't know if Chuck has ever had an issue with, with Rick. You don't have that. I mean, he's a quintessential telecommunicator. There's no, no way around it. His loss is immeasurable as far as how he deals with people and the way he handles incidents. And what you get is, you know, what you see here is what you get. He's gonna be a tremendous loss to the fire service. Not just the fire service, I speak for law enforcement. You know, we get such dicey incidents anymore. You know, the days of the mundane calls and no calls on the midnight shift, those days are gone. Those days are gone. Look at the volumes that we have from the 1970s, 1980s to today. It's just, it's phenomenal the amount of calls that are handled by the telecommunications. And I just want to say on behalf of law enforcement and the fire service, you know, Chuck would echo the same thing. We're gonna miss you terribly. I hope she doesn't take you on the road the rest of your life because I get a feeling that's what might happen. But I'm here to say we're losing a gem here in, in Rick Whalen because he's tremendous, and you deserve it, and we wish you well. So thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate all the kind words everybody has said. I truly do love the job. You know, it is hard. And believe it or not, when I started there in August of 99, three months later, I was on the way out because I couldn't handle it. I was on the way out, and somebody talked me back in, just give it one more shot. And here I am, 22 years later. Again, 40, almost 41 years in the fire service. I'm gonna continue that. Have a long, I don't know. Appreciate everything the county has done for me and my family. I'm gonna miss it. I keep telling people 911 is the most abused number in the world. We have to solve everybody's problem in a phone call or try to. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I just hope things get better in some aspects. We deal with a lot right from a lost cell phone right up to the worst things we can imagine. We, people look at 911 for this, problem solvers, whether we can solve it or not. Again, appreciate everybody's support and hope I could continue on with the fire service and wish everybody well in the 911 center. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. We can't begin to thank you enough. Your dedication, your character, and your work ethic is unmatched. And you're irreplaceable. You say you can replace people. People like you are irreplaceable. We can fill the position, but do what you've done for residents throughout the county, 911, fire services. You don't find people like that. So we thank you so much.
Yeah, just Chief, I want to say that the, listening to the, to the combination of your, your strong constitution, your character, and your vast experience equals one great public servant. And we really want to thank you on behalf of the people for that. And words can't really describe, I'm sure, how many people's lives you've saved and how many people's lives you've made better. But thank you for all you've done and enjoy the retirement and try to get some sleep. You can catch up.
I got an hour to tone it.
Now, you know, you hear the words hero too often anymore. I mean, you find a kid's bike, a person's a hero. You know, you've dedicated your life to fire EMS. And, you know, we can appreciate it here as Commissioners and through that law enforcement and EMS community. But the public doesn't see what you do or hear what you do. And oftentimes, you are heroes that never get credit for it and well-deserved. Would I, I found interesting that Roxanne put on the TDA today a part-time position for you. Be glad.
Good try.
Thanks.
You know, it's your last day.
Maybe.
Okay, you let us know.
We have a gift up here for you. We'd like to get a picture with it.
Thank you.
Next, we have bid openings. Nikki Gottschall is on the line.
Yeah, Commissioners, we have a bid opening for fourth quarter food products. We only received one bid, and that was from Kiko. These are multi-line items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Accounts payable cash requirements report with Brandy Clemens.
Before we start there, is that alarming that we only had one bid? Could you explain why?
I don't know why. Typically, we have Cisco and Pizer also bid. They did bid last time, so I'm not sure why they didn't submit a bid. Maybe Maya had some insight into that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the accounts payable cash requirement report for invoices due through September 8th, 2021 to be paid on September 1st, 2021 in the amount of $2,103,815.05. And this week, 79% of the invoices are just grants and other sources that were passing through.
Just under 12% is out of county general.
Yeah.
Any questions on the accounts payable?
I'm trying to figure out the greatest part of the grant was, looks like the T148.
Title 148 funds that are passing through the children in U of M.
Oh, children use, our children use funds. Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve.
I'll say it.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4.0 TDA actions with Roxanne Brico.
Morning, Roxanne.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're asking you to approve the following TDA changes. In the Department of Public Safety, removing communications manager pay grade 1011 and replacing with deputy director communications manager pay grade 1112. In maintenance, renaming the department facilities management. Also in maintenance, changing the director of maintenance pay grade 1213 to director of facilities management pay grade 1213. Also in maintenance, changing the deputy director of maintenance pay grade 1112 to deputy director of facilities management pay grades 1112. And then finally, at RMS, in operations, creating one temporary full-time special projects position pay grades 1213.
Okay, any questions for comments?
I think when you look at changing our maintenance department to facilities management, I'll give you a few examples of why we're doing so because many times, I'm sure it happens to my other colleagues as well, we'll get stopped in a store or church or somewhere in the, in the community, and they'll say, geez, why, how's your maintenance people making so much money? Well, they're not what we call just maintenance. Okay, these people are taking on projects that, you know, from air coolers to scheduling to building new buildings to, you name it, repairing them, that it is facilities management. It is something that in the private sector, you know, qualified people like some of the ones that we have on staff right now, it would be up in the six digits as far as managing or running their organizations. So this was long overdue. I've had this question asked of me many, many times. And the name change is something that is, was absolutely needed. And we appreciate everything that they do for our taxpayers as far as saving us money. And it's a substantial amount of money. So they have saved the taxpayers millions. The buildings they have constructed, the renovations they have done, electrical work, all types of work that you would find from a general contractor, carpenter, these individuals have those skills. And if we went to just have them go back to speed regular mates department, we'd have to pay prevailing wage and bid the jobs out, and it would cost the taxpayers millions. So it was a proper time to change to what they truly are is, is working on facilities. And like I said, they do all kinds of construction work. And it was long overdue.
You notice there's no, there's no change in the compensation here. And hopefully, that'll be looked at with the study that's done for all the jobs in the county. But we can't, I think, go without recognizing Mr. Ken George, who's the director now of facilities management, for leading the team. All the, all the workers on the team contribute. And the, the leadership by Mr. George of being able to take these projects. The other thing about doing them in-house, in addition to saving money, is it gives us flexibility we need. So for example, when the pandemic hit and the sheriff needed to be moved across the street to be able to expedite getting things done, we had the ability to do that. That's just a small example. And the, and the ongoing renovation of the existing buildings to accommodate changes. So the other thing is, I think we should recognize in, in the, in the public safety department that the deputy is also taking on slash communications manager. So that, that is very, very important.
Okay, can I motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. This time, we'll recess Commissioners' meeting with the salary board, and we'll adjourn the salary board. Or not adjourn, I mean convene the salary board.
In the Department of Public Safety, removing communications manager pay grades 1011 and replacing with deputy director communications manager pay grades 1112. And at RMS Operations, creating one temporary full-time special projects position at pay grade 1213.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions?
Just to offer an explanation for the RMS, we have a upcoming retirement in RMS that is going to be very hard to replace also. And there's a transfer of probably 30 years of institutional knowledge that's going to take place. And this temporary position is gonna help effectuate that.
Once, once this, we will eliminate it?
Yeah, it'll be eliminated once the retirement takes place. It's obviously also paid for out of RMS funds, not out of general tax. But it's gonna help us be able to transfer a great deal of knowledge about the facility and how to solve problems there.
And it's not just that. RMS has, if you looked at the regulations that are governing a landfill, this is one of the key people. And every day, there's stacks of regulations that they must comply with. And every day, have reports because they are dealing with hazardous waste. And we felt it very important that we allowed RMS to train somebody within, I think that was a 90-day period, okay? Not without thought. I mean, we had some conversation about it, but after reviewing what this position does.
It's a deputy.
Yeah.
It's a deputy of the department, and the entire 90 days won't even be used because part of that time, the deputy will be unavailable, so.
Okay, any further comments? Kind of a motion?
I'll move to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Nikki.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's a 4-0 vote. Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board actions, and we'll reconvene Commissioners' Public Meeting. We thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Commissioner, we're asking you to approve the following personnel actions. In facilities management, Ken George, this is a change in title only as the full-time director of facilities management pay grade 1391,164.21 annually effective August 31st, 2021. At the prison, Kevin S. Stire, full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective September 6th, 2021. At the prison, Michael A. Seisley is a full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective September 6th, 2021. In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Beth A. Baylor, full-time promotion, deputy director communications manager, pay grade 12, $80,490.78 annually effective September 5th, 2021. In maintenance, Ian Scott Andrews is a full-time replacement maintenance three, electrical, pay grade 8, $20.01 an hour effective September 7th, 2021. And finally, in maintenance, Todd Marino, full-time replacement, maintenance two, pay grade 6, $16.76 an hour effective September 7th, 2021.
Ken, it's good to see we're getting maintenance, which is renamed now to facilities. Ken, it's good to see we're getting maintenance, which is renamed now to Facilities Management. And we're glad to see the compliments getting back up to full staff. And the same thing with the prison, I believe we're down two guards. So we're getting that back up to full, full complement. So both very supporting departments.
No, and I just want to say that I think it's wonderful that we print the salaries here. And I want the public and the other employees to understand that when you see salaries of ninety-one or eighty thousand, these are people who live twenty-four-seven for the taxpayers in this community. They are on call, they take the jobs home with them, they are responsible for millions of dollars of taxpayer money. They have stress that would make most people develop ulcers. And no one in this community should feel that we are overpaying any of the county workers, from the people who are the janitors to the people at the top. And I say that, and I know that sounds like a somewhat strong statement, but there's a real lot of dedication. We talked about Richard Whalen, who's given twenty-two years of his life, hours and hours of overtime. That meant hours and hours spent away from your family. It means holidays missed. It means being at the Christmas table as a deputy coroner and getting a phone call that you gotta go out because there was an accident on the highway. So I just hope that people will keep in mind, and the worst thing we can do is get angry with things that seem high when we don't necessarily understand the full extent of the responsibility and the pressure that they have. So, and I, if people feel differently, feel free to call me and I'd be happy to talk with the public about that because I feel no need to apologize for what we pay people. In fact, I'll be honest with you, I think that some of our jobs, such as our janitors, at eleven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour are too low. And that's a, that's an issue that we need to struggle with because people have to be able to raise a family. So, and I, and I am someone who, from years here, have talked about trying to reduce the complement of employees and we've done a great job of doing that. We've gone from five hundred and fifty-two down to about five hundred and thirty-six full-time people, which saves the taxpayers over a million, about a million dollars a year. But it also means that all of our employees are becoming more efficient. They're working more efficiently and they're working harder and we thank them for that. So I just want to make note of that. I also think there's a tremendous amount of transparency in having those salaries printed there so that no one, it's a full conversation and I feel fine defending it. So I just hope that people will understand and take that in the spirits intended, that we want people to be recognized, but we also want to compensate them fairly. And also, we have to be sensitive to the taxpayers, which I believe, believe we are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Motion to accept personnel actions.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Moving on to action items, Jason Yorks is on the line and he has seven point one and seven point two. Jason?
Yes, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioners, for you for approval, seven point one, vote on purchase of a 2021 Caterpillar two-eighty-nine D-three track loader for forty-six thousand and fifty dollars. Compact track loader is a fancy way for calling it a skid steer. As you, as the commissioners, you guys were last week, you got to see the old one. It is a, we're trading in a 2011 with a trade-in value of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. So the, the total price is at forty-six thousand and fifty dollars. This is through Pennsylvania Co-Stars purchase and it is a 2021 budgeted item.
Okay, any questions or comments? It is a budgeted item and I ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, seven point two. Seven point two is the vote on purchase of three transfer trailers to replace existing transfer trailers. We had two trailers on 2021's budget, one in 2022's. As we met with you and we explained the situation, we went out to bid for these, for the purchase of two trailers. We received bidding, we received pricing from Spectre Manufacturing was the lowest compliant bidder. We awarded it, they come back with an increase of eight thousand dollars due to steel prices. Every time we try to lock in a price, it's changing. We then put together the bid documents and we were ready to announce going out the bid. In the meantime, the last three weeks, I've had two, my two spare trailers go out. I'm down to the fleet of four trailers, which, they are old. And we, we are running just on the four trailers that'll get us by. We are doing more tonnage than we've ever done at the transfer station per month. We showed you our tonnage records. And so I am asking the commissioners to do a declaration of emergency purchase for three transfer trailers that will continue to get us to be able to operate and see us through. These trailers, unfortunately, in the price of steel, we don't foresee anything going down in price. And the problem is availability, just the spare parts, cylinders, axles, you name it. It's crazy. I've never seen a market vendors like this before. I was before you about six, seven months ago with Baylor Wire, same deal. It's crazy with the steel pricing. So I don't typically like to do this, but I am asking for this time for an emergency purchase of those three trailers. We do have the funding.
Okay, any questions?
No, and I believe Mr. Yorks, we did have a bid on the trailers at one point, right?
We did, sir.
Yeah, so we do have, we did, we did have a bid. I'll just note also, both of these purchases are from the revenue from the landfill, which is important for the public to understand. I, I'll move to approve. I think it's prudent to get it.
Commissioner Metzger, if I might, this is the solicitor. In terms of the amendment to the open meetings law that just took effect on Sunday, any item that has to be acted on has to be on the agenda and the agenda has to be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance of a meeting. The agenda that I had did not have this as an action item, which doesn't mean you can't act on it, but what the new law requires is that there be a separate motion, supported by a majority, to put it on for resolution today and then a separate vote to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we place on the agenda today the purchase of three transfer trailers under, exists, under an emergency response. The reason why I think it's reasonable for us to do it is that we've had a bid out on this, so we know what the price should be that's there to the public. We know that if we don't have the trailers, we literally have to shut down the transfer station, which means that trash that's coming there from all parts of the county and outside the county to that transfer station would then have to go back. They, we would literally have to turn back the trucks. The amount of money that we're spending is not prohibitive in the terms of the, this isn't a million-dollar purchase. And I, I think that under the circumstances, reasonable for us to do it on an emergency basis and place it on the agenda for this meeting now. My motion.
I'll second that motion, but solicitor, can, did I hear you correctly that we have to take a vote on this as far as the approval later?
No, no, we have to vote on.
No, 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 you can do it at the same meeting, Commissioner Masari. It's just that there are two separate motions. One is the, the proper motion that Commissioner Miravito just put out, which is to put it on the agenda and then there would be a separate motion to approve the added item, but it can occur right after the approval of putting it on the agenda.
Okay, thank, thank you for the clarification.
And so, okay, I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say, it's on the agenda now, but as the solicitor points out, that was put on this morning and it needed to be on twenty-four hours. So hence, my motion is to, to rectify that.
Would it be better to have it on the next, next meeting?
I, I think you can do it on this meeting. I mean, the, the amendment does allow for this process and you're following the appropriate way to address it. So I don't see the need to defer it a week. Obviously, you could do that if that's your preference, but there's no real need to do that.
And I'd just like to add that Jason mentioned, how much of an increase did we have after we sent out the RFP? They, they said, whoa, we can't give it to you at this price.
Yeah, we had, Commissioner, we had an eight thousand dollar per trailer increase.
In less than a week?
Yeah, in a week. And in the meantime, when we, when we consulted with the solicitors and Maya, we recognized we had to go back out to bid. So we prepared a bid document and in the meantime, if we were to go out to bid with an additional four weeks, we wouldn't see these trailers until February or March. And that's, that's the, we, we do not have spares right now. And we've gone through two, our two spares in the last three weeks. So that's the game, that's the game changer, that's the issue. I can't even get a spare hydraulic cylinder until January. At least that's the month they threw out to us as a spare. But Inspector said that we would be able to, they, they're reserving all their spare parts for their own production. So that's why they, they, that they would hold this pricing for us this week if we could get this approved and then they'd move forward. But it's been a nightmare, it really has been with steel pricing, never seen like it.
And I think America learned a huge lesson as far as the supply chain, that we're too reliant upon foreign countries to, to produce certain goods and services. And this is what, this is what can ultimately happen, not only, not only the increase in cost, but us being down, not being able to produce bottle caps. Or, you know, it's, it's amazing of, of the supply shortages that we have right now.
I just want to comment, you know, if you heard what Commissioner Masari said that it was eight thousand a week, you might think, oh, well, why not just wait? For example, it's expensive to buy a truck now, so maybe you can wait. But some things we can't wait on. We can't wait on the transfer trailers because they transfer the waste from Third Street down to the landfill and they constantly move.
Six days a week?
Yeah, six days a week, right, that's a good point.
And Ja- Jason, for the public's knowledge, because I've been here almost ten years, and I don't ever remember our recycling making money. Could you give them a report on the recycling?
Well, with the changes, the cutbacks in the, the less drop-off sites we've done, the less pools we've tried to get the boxes full. I know I've had a lot of people questioning why we have boxes shut down and stuff. The goal was to make sure we maximize each box and how much we put into the boxes. And I know people looked at it sometimes in the public eyes, an inconvenience, but it definitely made a difference. We've, we've been able to increase our tons, drop our pool, our pools, and of course, recycling was able to show profit. And commissioners, I might add, that profit margin was based on actual numbers, not grant funding. So it's, it's been a huge difference. We're still working on utilization of our curbside routes. We're just every day trying to make things work more efficient. And trucks, we're trying to keep the least amount of trucks on the road, fully containers as few possible. And I know everybody likes to see an empty container, but we're trying to get people to get the boxes as full as possible so we're not, you're already pulling air when you pull like plastics, so you really don't want to truck any more air than you have to. So you're correct, Commissioner, to point that out, that our recycling did show profit last month and our staff has really worked hard. They have, I'm proud of them, proud of the transfer station. We're seeing more tons than the transfer station we've ever seen on a monthly basis. That place is absolutely putting out more tons of waste than the, actually than I think the facility was ever actually built and since it. We just have lines out on Third Street, so we are working to try to figure out how to address that. But just in June alone, we did thirty-six hundred tons. We've never done that. So it's a credit to staff and how they're keeping people moving and, and safe. We're short staff, we are short truckers, we're short maintenance, the works, so.
And it's a credit to your management to make those tough decisions. So we appreciate what you've done and I, I, I hope we continue to move forward.
Thank you, sir. I'm pretty proud of the staff. I know you hear me brag about them, but I am.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, can I motion? Sorry, you didn't make the motion, I apologize. Did you second?
Yes.
Okay, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
That was the place on the agenda.
Right. Okay.
I'll move to purchase the three transfer trail, trailers.
And what, what are we going to call it?
Resolution twenty-twenty-one oh eight.
Any more motion?
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor, also.
You're welcome, sir.
Director McDermott is going to present Maya Toons' items.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to award the invitation to bid for emergency repairs to the Hughesville Stream Bank Protection Project to Gleno Hall Baker. This item is a hundred percent grant funded.
Okay, any questions on this? Actually, any kind of motion?
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to award the invitation to bid for paving project at the twenty-one oh seven Lycoming Creek Road, Williamsport Project, otherwise better known as N.D.J. Solomon's new facility, to M and M Paving and Excavating. This is a twenty-twenty-one budgeted item.
Okay, this is paving the parking lot?
Correct.
Any questions? Motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And lastly, commissioners, looking for your approval to award RFP for tower construction services to Skyhook Incorporated. This is a twenty-twenty-one budgeted item as well.
Questions or comments? Any kind of motion?
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Seven point six, Chuck Kiesling, here voting on purchase of power load system for a twenty-twenty-two truck.
Good morning, commissioners. This is the beginning of the replacement truck that was in the budget. We're starting with the purchase of the power load system and the litters. This unit certainly allows us to be able to do a lot of things with one person versus additional staff, so these are critical to our operation. So we need this approved to purchase and then we'll be coming along with the module. The truck will then be leased and that's, the order is not told early next year.
Any questions? Any kind of motion?
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seven point seven, Nancy Ackley, voting on agreement with Clear Vision.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, commissioners. Chief of Operation is requesting your approval for renewal of our contract with Clear Vision. They do, it's in Montgomery, PA, and they have adolescent inpatient rehabilitation and independent living, and this is for females only. And there is no rate increase this year.
You have anyone there?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's great to hear one of the places local, so that it's easily, more easily accessible, right? Can families allow them to visit?
Yes.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
More motion?
I'll second.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. You too.
Beth Baylor has the last two items, seven point eight and seven point nine.
Good morning. The first one is to Commissioners to vote on the twenty-twenty-one Keystone Communications Maintenance Agreement. This is for the backup radio system and for the key call interface, which is our alarm systems from the tower sites that read back into the comm center. This will cover for your twenty-twenty-one, it is a budgeted item at twenty-two thousand three eighty-five eighty-one.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Please, please stop it. Analog and digital?
This is for the backup, to the sonocampus.
Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried.
And my second item is to vote on the contract with Keystone Communications for the communications specialist technician. This is the position that we're contracting for replacement of the county communications specialist position. And first year is forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty, second year is fifty-four thousand six hundred, and third year is fifty-six thousand two hundred. It was not a budgeted item for this year, it is replacing a salaried employee. The, it is covered by the FEMA funding as a salary, but it is a contracted position for three years.
So it wasn't budgeted in the sense of we expected to use a contractor, but it was budgeted in the sense that we would have paid an employee to do this?
Correct.
So by not paying the employee, we're basically not having to deal with pension?
It was budgeted under...
Healthcare.
Right, healthcare, so we're saving pension and healthcare costs, but it will be reimbursed?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Second?
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. By the way, that's just one more example of how the efficiency is saved money by using the, and we actually think we're gonna get better ability response, right, Estelle?
Yes.
Commissioner, comment?
Emily?
I have no public comment online.
Let me, the audience, please come up and state your name to the record and...
Sorry, it's moving slow today.
Oh, what happened?
Scott Miller, eight twenty-two Tucker Street, Williamsport. Those of y'all that know me know I'm one of the most frugal people in the universe. I mean, I will squeeze a penny till it bleeds. This year, I got rid of my cable TV because I'm tired paying for it. I put an antenna up and the free public TV, the airwaves controlled by the government and licensed to places, I have noticed in this year that the TV channels I get, mostly at night, I'll say from about ten till about seven in the morning, they're disrupted by somebody. I don't know who, I don't know how, I don't know why. You know, I believe it's the role of the government to do what people cannot or will not do for themselves. I don't have the equipment to track down the violator that's causing me not to be able to get television reception. A lot of times, it's just perfectly fine, other times, it's so pixelated, I just turn my TV off. I feel it's a violation of my rights as a citizen to have the airwaves disrupted. I've tried contacting the TV stations and whatnot, and they tell me, oh, we got the three piers, blah, blah, blah. But nobody can answer why I can't watch Channel sixteen weather in the morning, you know? And so I'm asking the county commissioners to look into who is violating the airspace in such a way that I can't watch TV. Because if it were my poor antenna, it would happen all the time, it wouldn't be just mainly at these times. It does happen during the day. The only thing I can think of is a lot of banks and stuff, they wait until the middle of the night to transfer data, and so I think somebody's transferring data and their microwaves or whatever are interfering with the airwaves. Those airwaves belong to me, you know, we, the people, we own this. That's why the government sells off the rights to use portions of the airwaves. I'd really, really like to find out what's going on, and if I can't access the public airwaves, whomever it is needs to pay for everybody that gets cable TV.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Miller? The FCC, which is a federal agency, monitors, and Mr. Congressman Keller's office, I think you should call them and ask them to have the FCC look into what is disrupting the television. Almost positive it's the FCC, the Federal Communications Agency.
It is.
Yeah, so they, I mean, we can call Congressman Keller's office also, but I think hearing from a constituent's important, they will look into it, the FCC will look into it, into what's causing it. And you don't think it's due to any weather?
No, no, it's not the weather.
Okay, because I also don't have cable, and I have an antenna, and I notice that when there are certain weather events going on, the antenna will not pick up...
Oh, I take into account for weather events, you know, storms, you know, et cetera. I take all that into account, I'm very reasonable and understanding.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, I got rid of, rid of a satellite TV service after, on a cloudless sunny day, they said my signal went out because of a solar disturbance, which must have meant the sun was out. And it just irritates me that, you know, I don't know, let me get electromagnetic pulse Oppenheimer generator and knock out everything for the entire city, including, you know, every computer and stuff. And I guarantee you, somebody will be tracking it down, you know, because it's violating my rights as a citizen. And I come to y'all because this isn't Lycumene County that's doing it, you know? I don't know exactly where these relay stations, et cetera, are, but I know y'all have contracts with different communication people that probably have the equipment and know-how, knowledge to go, wait a minute, you know, you know, X, Y, Z company is, you know, you know, infringing on it or somehow doing it.
Do you still have your home phone number that you had before?
Yes, yes, I've had it for sixteen years.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm sorry I came late, but because y'all didn't validate for parking, I didn't want to run over, so I came late, so two hours would be enough on the year.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You too. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, hearing done, we'll be adjourned, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, which will be on September seventh, I believe.
Yes.
We want to have a delivery day.
All right, moving on then, bye-bye.
Surprised you didn't say anything.
I didn't get a chance, darn it. Why do you guys have those lenses?
I don't know your favorite journal.
Why do we have them?
The March of the...
Yeah, why have?
Can you hear it, does it...
No, I can't.
Seriously?
I'm serious. What comes out of there, all the way out.
You can't hear any of them?
When Scott... Well, you're... I don't know why, I've wondered every time I come to him, why you guys have them, why I can't hear it.
Well, the mic is supposed to have, we'll have to ask them.
They need to, they need to sit back there and listen.
During the trails?